Seeing the presence of a quorum, I will call to order this meeting of the Anderson Pelham Regional School Committee at 6:35 PM. For people's awareness, this meeting is being recorded for future broadcastation and stuff by Amherst Media. And the first order of business is approval of the minutes of October 22nd, 2019. I know that people have had a chance to see those minutes. Ms. Fanch?
Small item. Under in attendance, my first name is not Phipp.
It is not?
It's not.
It is Kip.
Small detail.
Okay. Kip with a K, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. McDonald?
In the first section, under roll call was taken for the Regional School Committee, I believe I was there. So my name is missing from that roll call vote.
Okay.
And I believe for Union 26, Ms. Ordonez is missing from that list.
Okay.
I have a few others, too.
Keep going.
Under Section 2, it said, just a typo, resumed the meetings.
Yes.
Under Section 4, third paragraph, the grade span advisory board or group, is it group or board?
Board.
Board.
Where is that again?
The first line of the third paragraph in Section 4.
Okay, there it is, again.
There, yeah. And then in continuing in that section, stands for specifics of what are the pros, the cons, and I don't know that you meant the barriers to academics, but I wasn't quite sure what was intended there.
I think instead of the word barriers, as I recall, it's okay to say, I think within the areas of arenas of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Instead of barriers, can we just say areas of, instead of the word barrier? Sorry. Be right back.
I just had a question in the Section 7, Paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, the one that begins with Ms. Spitzer, and maybe Dr. Morris, you can clarify on that. I wasn't sure, this didn't match my remembrance, the infrastructure on fundraising and then move forward with itemized budgets. I thought that it was the, because something more about a clear plan to then begin the fundraising, but...
He looks like one of your colleagues would like to comment.
Well, I just, I'm trying to remember that conversation as well, and I think I was just saying that we could start building the infrastructure for the fundraising prior to having the plan complete. And I don't know which one of us said that, but I think that was the gist of what we're...
That's definitely what one of you said.
Yeah, one of us was...
I think I believe I said that. That sounds like something I might say.
Yeah.
And I have one more.
Okay.
Sorry. In the transportation bid section, which is Section C, I think?
Yep.
On the top of the next page.
Okay.
The second paragraph.
Okay.
I think the number one thing we could do to reduce carbon emissions, I think, is what's missing there, is reduce the length of roots and increase the number of families. I think that's a critical piece that was missing from that sentence. And then in the next paragraph where it, the third line, second line starts with Ms. Stanser agrees, and then it says she also asked a question. I believe I was the one that asked the question.
Okay, so Ms. McDonald asked a question regarding the impact by shortening her roots.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, your next.
And I think you might have also been the one who agreed about locking in the five-year contract, the sentence before that. I don't think that was me. So the Ms. Stanser agrees, I think, should be.
So maybe just...
Oh, that's so funny. So you changed that to Ms. McDonald, and then the next one can be she also asked.
Yes.
Great.
Yes. So two things in, on the next page.
Under policy discussion.
Yep, and it's the BDB section.
BDB, yep.
The second paragraph, it said that I described at the policy committee that Margaret, Ms. Stanser should revisit the language regarding the officer duties of secretary. I don't think that was me, but I don't know who it was.
Was it Ms. Ordonez or myself?
It was one of the two of you. That's my recollection.
Yes, I think.
It was one of the two of you. You want to claim it?
I'll claim it.
Without going after video, I need our best recollection.
And in the next to the last paragraph, it's under the new anti-harassment policy.
Yes.
The last line of the next to last paragraph, Mr. Menino and Ms. Stanser described that feedback from the chair of the committee, I think it should say the Pelham, the chair of the Pelham School Committee. I think.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it for me.
Mr. Demling wrote me a note and said, inputs on minutes, item 7A, top of page 2. Mr. Demling had a question regarding timing and how long this would take if the schematic design is not done. Please add the words soon, after done, not done soon. And that was his comment. Are there other edits? I have the lectures, I have another one someplace. Yep?
Maybe it was at the next paragraph, or two paragraphs down right above Section B, Mr. Nakajima noted capital projects. My recollection is that you were talking about that that should be done now?
Yeah, that actually wasn't it. I was looking for, I was looking for, I was looking for a highly clerical bit that I saw earlier on, but you're right about this one, too, that the last paragraph of the fields update, essentially the gist of the statement was that we needed to move forward with a plan immediately for schematic design and a budget for the fields, because the town was engaged, Amherst Town of Amherst was engaged in debating very significant capital projects, and if we didn't get organized in a way that was actionable, we wouldn't be part of that conversation or able to advocate for the regional schools. A great summary of what I thought I said last week. Yes?
I just noted, that took me to something that I see in the paragraph, the second paragraph on that page, Ms. Stanser had the opportunity to go to the consultants last spring, that should be this consultant's presentation last spring.
Okay. Anything else? Yes?
On the last page, in the section about the anti-harassment party, party policy, excuse me.
Is it the very last paragraph?
No, the last, the first paragraph of the last page, where it says, Ms. Spitzer asked where this policy applies because it is currently broad. And I understood where the policy applied, and my question wasn't so much where it applied, but more if it was overly broad in terms of limiting speech in areas where we don't really have jurisdiction.
Right.
That's a fancier way of saying what I was trying to get across.
Right.
But it was more about whether it's too broad. I understood where it did.
Right. Okay. Okay. So is there a move to approve the minutes of October 22nd as amended?
Show me.
Move by Stanser, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fanch. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Is that God's hand? It carries 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 to nothing. Great. Okay, so we'll move forward on the agenda. The next item is committee, it's funny, ever since Ms. Stanser pointed this out, I feel like we have to have a different title for committee announcements, because that just does sound wrong. The committee member announcements.
That's good.
If people, if committee members have any announcements they'd like to make, they can do so at this time. Yes?
Unfortunately, you weren't able to join us for illness, but we had a wonderful night at the Amherst Education Foundation, Ms. McDonald, Mr. Demling and I, and actually I stepped in as a member of our team, and we won a Spirit Award. So I just want to thank the Amherst Education Foundation for the event, and we had a great time.
That's awesome. Any other announcements? Seeing none, well, I'll now open up the floor to public comments. If anyone in the public has a comment, they can come forward, they have the three minutes to speak, and you to identify themselves at the microphone. For those watching at home later, if you can't see, although we do have people in the audience who we're happy to have here, we do not have any public comments at this time. So with that, I'm going to close public comments. And just remind people again that you can write emails to us, snail mail, whatever you like to try to ensure we can get the input that you'd like us to have. Superintendent?
Sure, I'll be brief with the update tonight. Two quick notes that aren't in the written update, that's in the packet. One is that related to the last meeting, I have reconnected with town manager Paul Bachman about the fields and our discussion last week about the fields, because there is implication, there are implications, and Sheldon knows from being in that group in the past couple of years, between fields that are owned by the town, fields that are owned by the region, and just kept him abreast of that conversation and discussion, because there'd be lots of interest in the town side of how that goes as well, which is very frankly, even the region-owned fields, particularly the track, is widely used by the community, so he's been appraised at that. The other one, which I know is going to be an upcoming agenda more intentionally, is we did have a meeting last week, last Thursday, of the grade span advisory group, and I thought we made significant progress. I think we got some good feedback from the committee members, the board members, about accelerating, kind of getting pens to paper and writing things down, pros and cons, all those notes are already reflected on our website, so that it's a transparent process and people can see at least how board members are feeling, and we're looking forward, I'm looking forward, I want to speak for Ms. McDonald, to the next meeting where we debrief as a larger group, what we see as pros and cons, kind of what was talked about before in the notes last time, but I feel like we've done a lot of the, understanding the developmental needs and strengths of adolescent students, and so it was nice to feel like we were taking next steps in that regard. I don't know if you had anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, no, I thought it was a good session and a lot of, you had stacks of papers. I haven't read through all of them, but I also think in planning the next month's agenda, and I think it's November 19?
18th or 19th, something like that, yeah.
There was a lot of conversation about the need to get even broader input from the community and educators in the schools, more than the group already encompasses, parents from around the district, as well as educators from the elementary schools and the middle school. But there was a strong desire to solicit and engage the broader community to understand the concerns and hopes and sort of questions that are coming up from the broader community, so.
Ms. Menino?
When do you expect to gather parental input, see what the parents think about the situation?
Do you want me to? Yeah, so my first comment is there is a predominant number of parents or caregivers in the group already. I'm not suggesting that answers your question, but I do think it's important to note that. And that's really what Ms. McDonald, I think, was speaking to, that they're at the next meeting, trying to develop a clear plan of engagement. And one of the tricky things, we had a good conversation on this topic, is at what point do you begin to engage parents with kind of more formal communication? Is it, do you wait till there's a plan, you know, that's more clear? Do you give progress updates, but you know, how helpful is that? So that's on our agenda for our November meeting of how to kind of reengage, and at the next, at a regional meeting directly following that, I'd be happy to, you know, I think Ms. McDonald and I would be happy to share the results of that conversation.
Yeah.
So on the agenda, I'm just going to be very brief. Next Tuesday, which is Election Day, so there is no school for students, there is, it is a workday for staff, and so as we've done the last three years, our curriculum day will, in the morning, will be a district-wide day that focuses on the topics of social justice and equity. This particular year, Elijah, who I was talking with again today, will be our keynote speaker. He spoke last year at the Maske Lissin Conference, and is incredibly powerful describing his experience, and particularly talking about intersectionality of identities. So more on that soon, but just, we're excited to have that day. We have about 20 or so workshops that are being led on a wide range of topics, obviously in the paper version, it's not as neat, but if you got, when you got this electronically and what's on the website, if you click on that link, you'll be linked to the different workshops that staff members are choosing to engage in their work. Just a couple of quick updates below that, and I think I'll keep it brief, there's a fair amount of writing here, just, I referenced with Ms. Stewart last time, that's been a highly successful athletic season, and just listed more details about the postseason, the sports that have qualified for postseason play already, and this is really pretty much a hallmark season in my time, the last couple of years anyway, of our student athletes performing at a very high level, so congratulations to them and the athletics department. We had Australian students coming, and a number of students listed who hosted families, and I think one of the things that we really appreciate is that we learn from students, and this is a very international community, and we try to, as best we can, provide additional experiences for students around the world, as well as students here to experience that. In today's digital times, that gets a little easier, actually, there's a number of projects, both at the elementary and secondary level, where students are able to collaborate and connect with students living in very different contexts. That describes it. We're very happy with our, on the flip side, our academic scholars, the National Merit Semi-final Corporation is one that sets up the National Merit Scholar Program, and we had a significant number of students who were named as finalists and semifinalists. And again, congratulations to those students and the staff members who worked with them to achieve at the very high level. And I think that is, as I said, I'm going to try to keep it brief, and I think I'll do that tonight.
Any questions for the superintendent? There are none. That means it's time for the hairs of the day. For better or for worse. So one of the things I wanted to talk to the committee about today is, we've talked previously about the fact that the chair, not just of this committee, but of other committees, tends to be used as a sounding board for the superintendent when things come up. For that reason, you end up getting apprised of more information, more communication than other members of the committee might, and for better or for worse, it's, people wanted to change that, there's a lot of information you could get if you really want to. I smile only because most of it, the reality is, if it's fun, the superintendent takes it directly to the committee. If it's complicated, he might talk it through with the chair of this committee or another. If it's really unpleasant, he'll almost always just talk to the committee, the chair of the relevant committee. And so the reality is, if were you to have the great pleasure of getting all this, what you're going to find out is you're, you're an aggregator of unpleasant realities, some of which could be incidents that have occurred where the proper teams need to evaluate what's happened and come to a good assessment and an appropriate one, then essentially the superintendent will act as if the chair is representative of the committee and saying, look, I'm trying to handle this appropriately, I want to make sure somebody knows. I'm looking at another chair of another committee simply because I know it's not just true for this committee, it's true for the other committees as well. One of the reasons why that's relevant for what I'm bringing up tonight is just because we've started going into developing a policy around harassment by, it's a broad policy in terms of its potential application, but it's also talked about specifically members of the community harassing students or staff. And I just, I feel like we're at a point where I felt like, I felt a responsibility to talk more to the committee about what's going on, simply because in my observation, this is becoming a significant detriment to the functioning and operations of some of our individual schools, as well as the staff members. I don't know if this is accurate to say, but I think it's getting bad enough that people are calling in sick because they're feeling like they're confronted with a hostile work environment, or they're very uncomfortable. There are folks who are unsure how to handle their duties because of that, and essentially, when you look at the policy we were trying to develop, the notion that any individual incident that occurs could be seen as somebody having a bad day when they hit a keypad, but that when you start to aggregate it, what you get is you get something that looks more like harassment or bullying. I think the further point I'd make is that if you look at the language people choose to use, we had a really contentious conversation with multiple parties last spring about our athletic fields, and even in the most passionate moments in which honestly the committee and the DPW and the superintendent and others were being accused of potentially neglecting our duties around the safety of children, which I can't think of there being a more sobering accusation that you could face in a school. The reality is, what people were focusing on was the facts. They would say, come out to the field and look at the terrain, look at the rocks, look at how dry it is, whatever it is, they would say, look, just come with me to the fields, we can talk about what we're seeing here, or what my child's experiencing. That's less true, and becomes, I think frankly, untrue entirely, when somebody starts using language that itself by its nature is disparaging people's character, maligning them, or trying to make them deeply uncomfortable based on their identity or anything else. And I'll just, I'll give, I'll give one example of an email, and by the way, just to be clear to the public, although the policy we're developing, as Dr. Morris said repeatedly, is intended to solve any number of issues that come up, the reality is, we're getting emails from a particular individual in the community, dozens of them, I forget what the total number is, but the point is, this isn't a widespread issue, this is singular. And it's singular in a way, which is why we talk about knowing it when you see it, in terms of the cumulative impact of it. And just as an example, I mean, there was an email sent to our attorney this past weekend that questioned his competence, questioned his sense of decency, also described me as a, what was it again? A lonely, childless, sad, lonely, childless man who knows nothing about public education. Any number of those things could be true, if somebody wants to point them out, I don't really care. My point is, if you're trying to make a policy point, and you think you have an intelligent and well-reasoned and well-documented point to make, you probably don't have to use language like that. Similarly, I recall, in the last few months, there was an email in which a senior member of our administration was accused of having an affair with a prominent member of the public. There was bluntly, the language I saw, it wasn't actually, there was another email, I think the committee might have seen, but there was another email that I was privileged to, that was much more direct in its accusation, or its smear. There wasn't any truth to it, but also what I'd say, the point I'd make is, why does somebody even make comments like that? They make comments like that because they're trying to bully people in ways in which the facts are not on their side. And also, and this is really, to me, the critical thing, is that if you know what it's, if you know what it's like to be, somebody asked me recently why I loved doing what I do, and the comment I made to them is, when I was a kid, I was the youngest of seven kids in my family, in a very close uncle's family, and even though they were a loving family, everyone picked on me. And the funny thing is, what I got out of that was, I got a strong sense of looking for underdogs, looking for people who are being picked on, and understanding what the climate's like when people are picked on, right? And what you know is, bullies get power when people are silent about it. They get, they get, they get, they get their power out of the idea that when somebody's sitting at work and gets an email, that email feels like their own private hell, and it feels like it's nobody else's, and that no one else necessarily would validate their feeling that they're under stress, under strain, particularly if the person writing the emails is clever enough, that it never quite seems actionable, which is one of the frustrations that I've had about this. But, so I just would say, I'm going to leave names out of it, but a quote from this individual, "I did research and read articles," and by the way, some of the grammatical challenges in here are from the emails themselves, so I apologize, I'm not going to correct the grammar. "I did research and read articles about where my own patterns are coming out in order to examine what I'm actually saying. If all the individuals, quote, if all the individuals involved are Jewish, as I was told today, then what exactly is going on? There is another pattern that reveals a level of ethnocentric bias against investing in or dispersing equitable funding and privilege to anyone outside of the Jewish faith." Now that was written to somebody who is Jewish. And the clear accusation is that they're behaving in a way that is biased based on their religion. If you know anything about antisemitism, that's antisemitic, flat out. Another, another comment, "Not once has ARPS ever been upfront, honest about anything but a group of manipulative, a group of manipulative group of deceitful a-holes." Mike said, kids might be watching, and I should be careful with my language, although the person writing wasn't careful with their language, just to be clear. That's the entire point. And I want to go back to the point I made a moment ago, if you've got, as harsh as the critique can be, if you've got a reasoned argument, you can make your reasoned argument as hard as it can be, you can say the committee's not doing its job, you can say the superintendent's not doing their job, but it's unlikely you would write, if you're trying to do anything of bullying someone, that a slob of a human, such as the person referenced, who wouldn't even be hired to work in the back room of Home Depot, quote unquote, that was about as professional as, fill in the blank, wearing pajamas to work for the last 10 years. Another quote from another email, that slob of a human. Another quote, "Bring that old hag if you want," fill in the blank, to the person. "You can call your sleazy lawyer." "You use the school district to project your own ethnocentric ideology, you're killing a child, you're killing a student, you almost killed this child. ARPS is like the Catholic Church, and you are all not different than the priests." Presumably that's referencing the clergy sex abuse scandal. The next phrase in that email said, "Mida, kenegid midah," which is, what is that?
Hebrew.
Hebrew. Hebrew expression says, what goes around comes around. And again, the recipients of that email were two people who are Jewish, one of whom also received the earlier email that referenced the idea that the hiring and investing patterns were biased based on that person's religion. So that's what we're dealing with, just want to be clear about this stuff. That's what we're dealing with. "Not once did you, fill in the blank, or that slob of a human, fill in the blank, ever effing respond to a single goddamn attempt that I have made to support this job. Soon, you, fill in the blank, are going to have a harder time getting unlimited access to waste school funds without your pool boy." To another person, again, "Time to retire, you've done enough, thank you very much, you homophobic old woman, who I couldn't..." Dot, dot, dot. Let's see. "It's unclear how you secured..." It's hard not to say who this is without reading the email. I guess I'm reading the email. "It's unclear how you managed to secure Assistant Superintendent out that debacle lawsuit. Did you threaten one, took advantage of the school committee who didn't have a clue about licensure, evidenced by the total confusion at every turn?" You could have stopped, this is also very blunt, "White rash woman," I'm going to quote instead what was, what somebody highlighted here for me, "white rash woman who intentionally got pregnant to force equal attention from a divorced man with another child because of his jealous of his ex-wife." The email goes on from there. I'm going to, I'll stop at that point, but the, and there's, believe it or not, from what I've been told, there's actually a much longer pile of them. I know that there is a longer pile of ones that I've seen that attack school committee members, because some of them also similarly get very, very personal. Again, I just want to repeat this, especially because I know the public will be watching. I'm not saying, I've never heard a member of this committee say, that if you, if you really dislike what we're saying, you may come before the microphone and speak in ways that are unartful, ways that you might regret later the language you used, speak with an intense amount of passion about how much you think we're making a mistake in the decisions we're making. There's nothing about what I'm saying in terms of bringing forward, this is a problem, that is criticizing that anyway. If you have a problem with what we're doing, bring it on. We want, we actually, in fact, we need to hear from you. If we don't, we can't learn, we can't do a better job, we can't hold Mike accountable, or anybody else who works here in this district. But there's a different tenor and a different tone, if you're going to smear people's characters, characterize them in ways that make them feel uncomfortable, I've had other ones at me that are similar in that way. And also just to point out that because this is something that's not happening publicly, it's happening through emails, which are public records, but they're happening through emails, what the clear intent is to create multiple cells of little private hells people are going through. What what the the clear intent is to create multiple cells of little private hells people are going through, where they feel put upon, they feel isolated, they feel extra burdened in their job, and they're finding it more difficult to bring their best self and their best professional self at the work that they're doing. Um so uh I, you know, I I I the reality is, I am just gonna say this bluntly. The reality is, if if we collectively as a community can't find a way to change what's happening and change the culture of what's happening, um we're gonna drive people out of this district to work here. We're gonna change our ability to get our work done effectively and well. And I and I'm not trying to make a big thing of this, but I actually think we've made a lot of progress as a school committee over the last couple of years. And um a lot of that could be backflow because ultimately, our effectiveness is the people who work here. And so if they're not supported and able to do a good job, then um this enterprise doesn't succeed, doesn't grow. Um so I don't, so I'll I'll take some comments or questions, but this wasn't an item on the agenda, so I wanna be careful about how far we go. Mr. Fong?
Uh well, first of all, I think it should very much be on the agenda, um so don't don't apologize for it not being there. I think every member of this committee should have an opportunity to address this kind of nonsense. But having said that, I appreciate your comment about um inviting people to come to the microphone and say it to us in our faces. Um I think you can dare them to do that. Um I appreciate your reading these in public, because I think most of the public doesn't know about this. And if they watch um Amherst Media, they will know about it. Um I think sadly and tragically, I don't see this as new. I do see it as intensifying over the last fifteen to twenty years, but it's nothing new. This kind of stuff has happened before in in Amherst. And that's a sad statement to make about the community that we all either live in and or work in. And last, um I'm sorry, next to the last, people have already left, long before this nonsense came out. Because this is fairly common in Amherst, this kind of um character assassination, this this kind of belittling and um disgracing people's reputation is not not new. And people have left, people in high levels of administration in this district have left. And finally, as much as I regret having to ask for this, I would like to have a copy of the uh one that you read that is explicitly anti-Semitic. Being Jewish, I would like to share that with Rabbi Weiner, uh so that he knows what's um going on in the community. I think he has a right to know that.
Happy to do it. Anyone else, I mean, I I've given it was an opportunity.
I just wanted to say uh thank you to the chair for bringing this up publicly. Um I've, you know, both been the subject of some of these attacks, but also witnessed uh the incredible number of attacks that administrators in this district and school committee members have um received from this one individual. And I believe that it is one individual, I think this person has claimed that they are speaking for multiple people previously, but the only evidence that we have is that it is one person who has been undergoing a campaign basically against this district, uh primarily because the district is not doing the things that she believes the district needs to be doing. Um and everyone is entitled to their opinion, the public, we welcome public opinion and we welcome it when it's different from ours. Um but when it's this level of abuse and attack and is driving people from our district, as as Mr. Fong has uh stated, um that is when, you know, it should be alarming to our community that we have a such a sustained level of attack and vitriol being directed at individuals. And again, it's around character assassination, not even just dis, you know, it's not factual disagreements. It's uh claims being made based on hearsay, uh you know, gossip that has been heard, and then immediately uh launching into attacks against people based on very little factual information. And I personally have requested this person to come forth and share any factual information or evidence that exists. I believe that the chair has done so as well. Um and we're still waiting for other things other than just uh accusations. And so when it gets to this level of of attack, um it can only be called a campaign. It can only be called as somebody who will not stop until all of us basically quit, and this person has said that publicly as well. Um that's just not the way that democracy works, I'm sorry. It's, you know, that that's one individual who's who's serving their own needs and their uh agenda. And so I have a severe problem with that, because I think that if the rest of the community were given an opportunity to hear from this person um the facts that they claim to have, then they could make their own decisions about whether or not this is true. But I think in the the kind of uh tactics that this person has been using um doesn't allow for anyone else to actually weigh in or or provide an opinion or anything like that. And I think as far as the anti-Semitic comments, it's also been several protected classes that have been named.
Yes.
Um and that is incredibly uh, you know, uh mortifying to me that we are in an environment where we have one individual in the community who is making these, you know, consistent attacks against protected people. We have had pregnant women, we have had people of color, uh you know, and name, I mean, the names that are that are launched against them and the way that they've been they've been addressed uh in these emails is is horrifying. Um and I don't particularly see myself as a person who's very sensitive to that kind of thing. I've worked in environments before where people are very cruel and, you know, can say things, whatever's on their mind. And we're not looking to police speech, uh but we cannot allow, in good conscience, our staff and our administrators to be driven out that way simply because they're afraid to turn on their emails in the morning.
Yeah, and the crazy thing about it is, is that if you if you had some, but first off, I firmly believe if someone was using that kind of language uh publicly, like at the microphone, then the entire community would turn uh against them or at least let them know what they thought of it. Um I have no question of that. Um but I think when you use that kind of language in individual emails that are essentially, even though it's public records, public emails, it would work, essentially they're private moments. Like you get to work, you have a cup of coffee in your hand, you look at your email for a minute, and boom, what comes at you is something that's per assaultive to you in terms of the nature of your, what your identity is, who you are, and making you uncomfortable. It's the very, it's the very nature of a civil rights violation, actually, of someone coming forward and just trying to live their life and, you know, have as good or bad a day at work as anyone ever does professionally. And all of a sudden, they have to have this wave coming at them of uh of hostility based on who they are as a person. And the other thing I'd say too is that um the emails, and I think the committee has seen some of these, the emails are a real grab bag, because the more public facing ones will talk about policy and budget in vague ways. But if you if you if you public record requested the broad set of emails that actually have gone to members of the school committee as well as to the superintendent and others, um they're actually much more directive. I want you to fire this particular person. In their place, I want you to hire this other specific named person. Now, if you're, again, you talk about, as as my colleague, Mr. Donia has talked about, what you do in a democracy or in a government. Um if you wanna talk about good process and best practice, best practice is not somebody wielding um innuendo and slander to say, you have to spend a thousand dollars more on this line item, then you need to fire this specific person. Oh, and by the way, I have the replacement lined up, and you better hire them. And I think the 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 uh the interpolation is, or else I won't quit, and I'll keep harassing you and bullying you and intimidating you until you do. And so the reason I bring this up is because, again, if if you even look at sort of the end, at the end, at the end of this journey and say, well, what is this all in the service of? You'd say, well, goodness, you can't have one individual of the community or one member of this committee, anybody, saying, well, I've decided, I I wanna I wanna override everyone else's judgment and substitute my judgment for everyone else's, not just on the broad parameters, like you could do if you run for committee and say, well, can't we do the budget differently? Which is a very reasonable thing to ask. Instead, or are priorities right, could we put more money here or there? But specifically say, uh I guess I had an unpleasant interaction one day in one of our schools. Uh I don't like this person, and I'm gonna go on a relentless campaign until they're either fired or so uncomfortable that they quit. These are the emails that members of the staff have been getting relentlessly, relentlessly. It's wrong. So um we're gonna have to keep talking about what we do. Um I've I I'm saying this also because the superintendent, everyone in the district answers the superintendent. And so I think um he has a burden to carry, to try to ensure that we have the best possible work environment for um all of the staff, um as well as the best environment for all the kids. Uh but who does he turn to um if the pressure is boiling? Us. Us. So I'm not asking, again, it will be on the future agenda, probably on the twelfth of our next meeting. But I'm just saying, I'm bringing it up now, because the committee has to be aware, this is very, very serious. It needs to be dealt with, it's a significant problem. And we've, onto subcommittee updates. Any subcommittee updates? Yes, Ms. Fong?
Um so we had a budget and finance subcommittee meeting just before this one, and uh three things from that. Um we reviewed the fees, the list of fees, which, and this information will come to the entire committee at some point. But um we had a first look at the fiscal year twenty-one capital budget, and we chose a date um to invite uh budget and select board people from the four towns to talk, begin the conversation about assessments.
Right.
So there'll be more coming.
Any questions? Any other committees? Yes.
Um the policy subcommittee is going to be meeting on the eleventh, Monday, the eleventh, at five thirty, and we'll be continuing our work on the policies we discussed at last week's regional committee meeting.
Okay. Anything further? Seeing nothing, uh we will move on. Uh transportation bid under business item six A, in which we could anticipate possibly voting to authorize a three-year contract term with two additional one-year options for a maximum of five years. The transportation contract that will begin on July first, twenty twenty, and this is to authorize you to offer a bid that includes these terms. Mr. Mangan, welcome.
Welcome, uh thank you. And so, yes, last time we met on this agenda item, we shared a bunch of feedback and different things that would go in the specs, which we'll do our best to incorporate. Um we continue to welcome that feedback, either
Through communications to Mike, communications to Dr. Morris, um or emailing myself or Rupert, um our facility director. But this vote in particular is really just about including that one clause in the bid package to offer the five-year contract.
Dr. Morris?
Just just to add to that, the reason it comes to school committee is any contract that extends beyond three years needs to be voted by the school committee. So the reason in particular it comes to the committee is because we're asking you to approve looking at more than a three-year contract for the transportation bid.
Obviously, we talked about this last week. Uh was it last week, wasn't it?
It was.
It was. Are there are there any questions from Mr. Mangan or comments? Yes?
Just a clarification, this is the way that the current contract is built, correct?
Yeah, our current contract was a three plus one plus one, yeah. And the plus ones are at the sole discretion of the school committee, so it's completely your call to extend it to a five-year.
May I make a motion? Sure. I move to authorize a three-year contract term with two additional one-year options for a maximum of five years for the transportation contract that will begin on July one, twenty twenty.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh move Fong, second McDonald. Any further discussion, the debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, raise your hand. Uh it carries, and what do we have here, one, two, we have eight people.
Thank you.
Right? Yes, eight to nothing. Great, uh item seven, six B, strategic planning update for the high school.
Yes, I'll introduce.
This is an update only, not a, not voting on it.
And uh as Mr. Jones is coming up, just a a brief uh context sharing. Um so last year, we went through a pretty thorough strategic planning process, and as was shared at the end of last year and then the beginning of this year in terms of my goals, the real work of this of this year is at all three of the regional schools to take those broad district-wide goals and bring them into, what are the initiatives at the school level that will contribute to those goals? How do we prioritize those ones that happen in the school versus versus those that are happening at the district? And to come up and and bring back later this winter uh what that looks like at the school level, how to operationalize. Because if you remember the strategic plan, it was uh very ambitious, but it was also uh at a pretty broad level. And so Mr. Jones is gonna update us on his work with the high school faculty and staff of taking those broad goals and making them more actionable and specific at the high school level. So thank you for coming, Principal Jones.
Well, thank you, Dr. Morris, our committee members, Dr. Morris. We're very excited about the uh new beginnings at Amherst Regional High School and the strategic plan. Um early fall, as we started the year, and the faculty was uh getting to know me and vice versa, we took the plan from a a perspective of the moral imperative, uh work done by Michael Fuller. And we wanted teachers to identify in the beginning, what are they passionate about and what are they committed to? And this was activity where they took two words or two phrases and put them together. It was so powerful that we put it on our board as you come into the building. So as you walk into the building, just in front of the main office, you will see that we are ARHS. And you will see what we are committed to and what we're passionate about. And this all came from the teachers. Every statement there that you see on there is teacher-driven. And it really says a lot about what we're about here at ARHS. The moral imperative, as we defined it, was shift, it was a shift from stating the vision to creating the reality. So the initiatives that we would be doing would be creating that reality. As Dr. Morris uh gave us the charge, if you will, that the objectives and the uh outcomes are already pretty much written in stone by twenty twenty-three. We can now put those initiatives in based on the objectives. In September, a few weeks later, uh we introduced the plan itself, because because some of our faculty and some of our new staff had not seen the actual document. And we wanted them to see it, we kinda spelled it out. There was some terminology that they uh had some uh concerns about that they wanted to discuss and further define. Uh and also, we were integrating the moral imperative in as the umbrella of the strategic plan. And of course, you see the objectives here from A to F, uh going from uh increasing our diversity in our staff, uh strengthening our instructional practices, and just to say, uh I've given the charge to our administrative team to be in classrooms every day. Uh personally, I'm in at least five classrooms every day. And that's just not due observations, that's what I call just passing through, and to reaffirm all the good things that are happening in our classes. Uh also, uh strengthening our instructional practices, I mentioned before, and having their cultural identities uh with students of color, pretty much what was just being said earlier. Uh we have certain courses that address a lot of different issues, and we have very uh much diverse groups in our classes. Uh the emotional well-being of our students. Uh restorative justice has been very successful in its full implementation this year. Uh Mr. Mendez, who is our coordinator for climate and culture here in the building, has been meeting with students, and beginning second semester, will kick off our course in restorative justice. And he's been aggressively recruiting students for that program, as well as other organizations that are offshoots of our restorative justice program. Uh wide learning opportunities, and uh which are also, of course, uh speaking of restorative justice, but as we look down the road in initiatives, uh what other opportunities can we have academically for our students to broaden their range of ways in order to have postgraduate opportunities? And of course, we talked about our fields, about our instructional plan. Uh I must say that, you know, coming here, I'm very impressed with what we have. We have some great bones to work with, and I think we can expand our instructional program here at ARHS. And of course, our outcomes, and this is what we will see by twenty twenty-three, which can change. You know, sometimes you have to adjust to some things that may occur, but they will all be a deposit for student success. Uh just recently, at our early release day, October, in the cafeteria, we moved from our normal setting here. We sat by departments, uh our parent educators were involved, they were so excited because they are now being asked to be a part of what we're doing here. So everyone is a part of this decision-making. Uh we talked about what lies beneath, and we took uh a video from Robert Spicer, who's in Chicago, who's a restorative justice expert. And one of the things that he talked about was the iceberg, what's below? Because we know what's on top, but what are the strengths and our challenges below the iceberg? Navigating iceberg, you see an activity that teachers were able to work in groups, and you see how many posters are there? There are a lot of good positive things and some challenges that we're identifying, and we'll identify those things through our initiatives, through the strategic plan. We had turn and talk uh activities, as well as what you see on the on the right picture of identifying of identifying and defining implicit bias, we gave some examples, as well as the term white supremacy. That was a term that they were having a little bit of, you know, angst about and wondering where did it come from in terms of the development of document. But there was also a article that some had read prior to, and there was discussion. There were some people from departments who were on the planning committee and explained how the term came about. But what we're looking at is the initiatives. So, it has become a term that we really worry about. Because we're about all, and all does mean all here at ARHS. And that's how we're going to do it. Our next steps, as early as tomorrow. We will identify three focuses from the objectives. So, it could be objectives B, C, and D. We're looking at, you know, ranking, and that will be our focus throughout the whole year. And looking at initiatives that will be able to be implemented with those objectives. And as we look at each nine-week period, we'll be monitoring some best practices, where we are. And then, from there, at the end of the year, where do we stand? How well did we do? Next year, we'll pick right up with the three and maybe add one more. So, we'll have four. And then by 2023, we'll match it. Now, the last objective, I believe, is objective F. That's a little bit more building-wise. But we can also say, how can we use the building that we currently have and make it for our students? We have three, 3D printers in the building. And our teachers are ready to use that for that STEM outlook. These go to the initiative, the hows, how we'll be able to do this. Restorative justice, interweaving that through the strategic plan. And I think we already are identified that, I believe it's B, C, D, and a little bit of E already can fit into the strategic plan. And Mr. Mendez and I have already been talking about that in discussion and getting that in play. Finally, we'll have student input with our new, newly-formed student advisory committee. We had our first meeting about two weeks ago. We'll have our next meeting on November 4th. And we'll do the activity of navigating icebergs and having the students give input. We've had our teachers, now we'll have students, put them both together. And also identifying and defining their version of implicit bias here, and our challenges and our strengths, and what we have that can combat that. And that's pretty much where we are. And moving forward, we said it, this is not a race of a sprint. It's, as I told, as I asked Chris Gould for his expertise, it's a cross-country meet, a couple hills, a couple valleys. But then we'll get to the goal, which is straight ahead. If there are any questions, I'll entertain those.
Wonderful. Any questions for the committee? Yes?
I just want to say, Principal Jones, I mean, it is absolutely a delight to, to hear the way that you've taken, especially the restorative justice program, but, you know, the input from administrators and teachers and educators throughout the school, as well as students, and incorporated that into your strategic planning process and thinking. I've had the pleasure of talking with you several times about your plans and what you want, you're trying to achieve. And I know that your conversations with the school equity task force have also been greatly appreciated, your openness around the restorative justice program in particular, and how you've embraced it and really, you know, want to help it, see it succeed and grow in the school. So, I just, I just wanted to comment on that. I think it's, it's a wonderful step forward for our district and for our school. I know the students are better for it, all of us, quite frankly, are better for it. And so, just wanted to commend you for that. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And it's, it's, it's been fun. We are very excited about what we're doing, and tomorrow, we'll go to another level. And we'll see it's come to its eventual reality. And as we said before, not just stating it, but making it a reality.
Follow-up question. When do we see, like, what the strategic plan actually is? Is there a document as a product? What does it end up looking like when you're done with this process?
I think if you look at the objectives, as well as the outcomes, in between there, if you want, if you're looking at it in a document, in between the filling or the initiatives. And I think you'll also see another document that I've used before, which is kind of like a check-in. I call it a nine-weeks report, where we can be looking at our focus areas, what, how we're monitoring them, and how we're doing at that point. And there could be some other things, I'll ask faculty for input. There's the instructional side of how we're doing academically, as well as the managerial side of what we're putting in as the initiatives. So, you know, it really depends on where we land on the objectives. Say, for instance, if it's the instructional piece. Well, we'll be looking at certain instructional look-for's in the classroom as we do our walkthroughs, and how we're moving forward on that, data collection, and how we're using data collaboratively. So, I'm just using some examples. If it is some expansion of some programs, like we say with STEM and restorative justice, Mr. Mendez has already given me a report on how we're doing so far, we're connecting with students, how many conferences we've had so far, and the success in follow-up. So, with that, you could probably see some data of what I call quick wins, as well as where do we go next in our next steps.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't done, we have a process that we do on the committee of our budget guidance, where we work with Mr. Mangano, the superintendent, to identify areas that we want to hear about more. But also, what that's tied to is the committee hopefully providing feedback of areas where when we're looking at the budget, we want to provide support, or at least we want to know what's going on. So, we can, we can weigh in to say, hey, that sounds important to us, we'd love to know more about it. So, one of, one of, my, my hope is, it sounds like you're on track to do this. My hope is that some of the ideas that you and your team are coming up with will be baked, baked and just baked enough anyways, if not more than that. That they get that, they could come back to us and have an impact on what your budget requests are. I mean, and I don't, I don't, no, no idea where you'll land, of course, but I know that, and I'm sure you know this, that outcome one is one in which there's just been so much conversation and so much passion, especially because you could, I think you can look at that, kind of like a sort of justice action, as a really affirmative set of interventions or initiatives that brings your school to a different place that is like nothing but positive, right? It's just a wonderful thing to see kids taking advantage of different opportunities, AP courses and everything like that. And so, I'm, I'm, I don't know why I'm throwing this out, but I guess because this is what we do. If, I don't know if you have anything to come back for us on that, that's, that, that is an outcome one or influence, you know, that, that's basically initiative that looks towards getting towards outcome one. But if so, I'm going to be a big cheerleader to making sure it gets.
Well, Mr. Nakajimi, you might as well start cheering. We're looking at the PSAT results when they come in, and that's where you get your AP potential. So, we can start looking there as we look towards for next year with students signing up for courses and identifying those students who we can encourage to take AP courses. The next would be providing that support, which our teachers are here every day, except for Wednesdays when we have meetings, or some Fridays, where we can now start looking at identifying students and providing that support. One of my firm beliefs is that students who do take higher rigor courses do whether, do well in four-year schools, of course, graduating on time. And just being exposed to the rigor. You may not get the three or better, but if you get a two or one, you've been exposed to the rigor. And then, and it has you well-prepared. We've just been having some discussion about bilingual identification. So, things such as access and programs like that, to encourage our students to be more proficient in those areas. So, there's definitely a push. Very happy that we have our college counselor on board, who has been very aggressive in getting a lot of students signed up in various programs. Our family center has been working very hard with getting students exposed. And my prior experience, working with students to, not just historically black universities and colleges, but other post-secondary options in the world of work and career work experiences, that's pretty much where we're looking to be heading.
Awesome. Nothing more exciting, there's nothing more exciting to hear.
Yes.
There really isn't. I want to go around the table if anyone has something else. Ms. Mazzar?
Yes, congratulations.
Well, thank you, sir.
As far as you've gotten, and best wishes for the rest of the journey.
Thank you.
I, I do have one question, though, and that's regarding the student advisory group. Can you, would you describe the composition of that group?
Yes.
And in particular, I can recall that there were many students who were kind of melted into the walls and disappeared as a result. And I'm wondering if you've identified any of those as quiet but important students to add to the group?
I would say from the first meeting that we had, and there are probably some other students joining, from my understanding. But it's definitely a cross-section of the school in terms of race, gender, and grade level. Some of the students I've, of course, seen in the building. A couple I met for the first time in terms of knowing them by name. But I can say that that group has a pretty good pulse on what they want to see in the building. I was very impressed with some of their questions. When we have a meeting on the 4th, we'll be talking about some academic instructional things that they want to delve into, which I was very impressed that they had those questions or they had identified those things. But we definitely want to include as many students as we can, because some of their subject areas, in terms of agenda items, were reaching out to students in a very diverse manner.
That last comment is my next question. How were they chosen?
It was really an open invitation, from my understanding. Liz Haygood, our student activities coordinator, had put the invitation out. Students heard it in announcements from what I could see. One of our teachers wanted to become the sponsor, and it kind of took a life of its own. It's not, to be honest with you, it's not the normal students you would see from student council or other organizations. It's a very broad-range group of students that have joined so far.
Thank you.
Other, I guess I'll go around the table, other committee members if I have anything they want to ask. So, we need to know, Ms. Mazzar?
Just a casual question. Students who take an AP course and get a one, do they feel the effort was worth the rigor?
Well, you know, the thing about it is, one thing that I've had as a philosophy is that if you get a one, you've been exposed to the rigor of being ready and being prepared for college because of how the course is being taught. Unfortunately, you know, getting a one doesn't get you the credit. In some schools where you get a five, you don't get the credit, depending upon what you major in and the school. But we still want to encourage students to be as rigorous as they can, to provide the support that we can, and hopefully that they get a three or above. But if they got a one, they're not a loser, because they've been exposed to rigor that when they go to two or four-year school, they'll be prepared for that type of work.
Ms. Mazzar?
So, I hear a lot of talk about AP and about academics. What about the students who are probably not going to go that way? Are they included in this also?
Yes, they are.
I mean, that's always been an issue in Amherst.
Well, that's why we're talking about change. If you look at one of the objectives there, providing those opportunities, where you talk about STEM, career tech programs, school-to-work, as we look at the budget, and I know that's an issue. But you also have to have a plan of how to incrementally put that in when you do have budget issues. So, as I said, we have good bones here. Every time I look to the left of my office, I go down the hallway, make a right, and I go down the hallway, I see something that's a lab, that could be really, really good to provide opportunities for students in a variety of ways. And if I go to the back of the building, with the woodworking, welding, more of your hard, career tech options, as well as a studio and the 3D printers, and what we could do with that, and have students create some amazing things, not just some nice things, but things that could help the community. And the creativity of our students, we could do some things here and take this to another level for our students to be leaving here with a certification in certain areas such as mechatronics. There's some openings here in the valley, from what I've seen, and we can have them ready. So, as we talk about budget, we may have to have that discussion.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that, because I, I've been in the valley for 40 years and known a lot of people. And I know that, for example, when my daughter graduated from Amherst, they posted all the names of the people in the schools they were going to. But not everybody was going to school. So, there was this segregation that happened between the academic students and the others. And I think in that particular case, they were made to feel less. And the students that weren't going to college. And so, I hope, hope you bring that into this also.
Yes, we are. One of our goals is to have a comprehensive high school.
Great.
And when we say comprehensive, that's across the board. If you look in our guidance office, you'll see a huge map of the United States and a small map of Massachusetts, because we want to be a little personal. But on that map, we'll have where students are going, not only just to college, but career tech schools. It'll wipe out in August, and we start it up again. So, in other words, it's a kind of a visual of where students can see where they're going. And it's also our way of keeping us accountable where we send students. So, looking at what we have on campus, and looking also at what we could possibly start with in terms of career-to-work, we have to look at the budget, look at a few things of how to make it work. But if we can, we can include students, say, from Summit Academy, special needs students, as students who have English and second language, as well as our students who've been here for the whole time, and give them options and opportunities to be successful post-high school.
Great.
Dr. Morris, you have something you want to say?
I'll pass. Thank you, though.
May I?
Yeah, of course, one more question.
Actually, it's not a question, I guess it's a comment. When discussion focuses on things like AP, resources for honors-level students, and so on and so forth, I never or seldom, if ever, hear references to the budget. But hearing someone talk about those kids who aren't going to go to college and who are going to be interested in more of a vocational direction, suddenly the budget comes up. And I, I'm not sure I feel good about that. And I'm wondering if there are efforts to identify those youngsters as early as eighth grade so that they can be directed to Smith.
We can do.
Or Franklin.
And I'll, I'll let Dr. Morris also weigh in, and I could too, but I'll defer to Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so, I think a couple of things. One, in relation to the budget, I think when we're talking about things that are different than we're currently doing, there are budgetary implications. So, I think it's a point well-taken to that, you know, perhaps the way I'm interpreting your comment fairly or unfairly, is that, you know, when Principal Jones is talking about programs that don't currently exist in our school that are more geared for student-centered, the workforce instead of enter higher education, we're talking about budget, but that's an artifact of the fact that historically, like many comprehensive high schools, most of the budget attention has been more focused on college readiness. And then that, if you look back 10, 15 years ago, no one was saying college or career-ready. They were just talking about getting to college. So, it's been a shift in educational thinking. I think it's been, in my personal opinion, a positive shift that we're thinking about that. You know, we have something like, and the data's going to be a little wrong, but, you know, if you look at students who attend colleges from US high schools and then graduate from colleges, you know, the graduation, graduating from a four-year college or the bachelor's is less than 50% of students who graduate high school. Think last, and I'm hesitant to the numbers, but I think a couple of years ago, I was at a conference, and it was in the neighborhood of a third. So, the idea is even if you doubled that, you'd still have a third of the students who are not graduating with bachelor's degrees. And somehow, we need to think of better pathways. We've partnered, you know, so, so I think when we think about the budget, we're thinking in that framework. Framework, I think, as it relates to middle school students, that's actually part of a larger conversation that's coming up in our grade span advisory, actually, about how, what's our programming look like at the middle school level? Because the reality is, we've expanded quietly, perhaps. A lot of our programs, existing programs at the high school in terms of woodworking, CAD, computer lab, a lot of the staff that's there have expanded their program. Some of that has come as new courses to this committee over the last few years. And yet, we don't have reflected similar coursework at the middle school level. And so, separate from vocational piece, which is fine, what I think, you know, we're sensing, or I'm just saying, I'll say, what I'm sensing we need to think about is, what's the pathway to that? what I'm sensing we need to think about is what's the pathway to that and how do students, if they want to go to voc school, fantastic, and that can be a great fit. But what are we building internally for our students, not just at the high school, but seven through twelve, so that they can take advantage of all the offerings and perhaps expand the offerings at the high school? And so I think if you looked, if you did a mapping of our courses that are looking, at least have the potential to be more career readiness, you'll see a fair amount of them at the high school. You will not see them reflected as much at the middle school level. And, and so when students get to high school, for many students, they're experiencing these courses for the first time, and we'd like to think about how that would be different in the future. Sorry, it was a long-winded answer, but I think it was an important thought there.
It's worth a conversation for another time, too. And I think you were giving us a taste of what you're doing.
Absolutely.
It's been more of an entree. That's very welcome.
Well, I didn't want to put too much of an entree out there, but the plate was just a little bit big.
That's right. We're going to be back at this conversation again, I hope. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next item is the warrant signing process. Without question, one of the more scintillating topics that we can have around our payroll and other expenditures. Sure?
So just, there was two questions that, and this is what's going around, that the committee asked me to find an answer or to request an answer to you from council that came up last week's meeting. The first is if there was an individual who was, if the committee goes to the model where an individual is designated to sign warrants and update the committee, what would that look like? So the first paragraph describes, this is from our attorney, Mark Terry, describes what that process would look like, which he uses quotes intentionally to suggest this is literally a statement that could be read and filled in at each meeting. I think there was, the way I understood it, the concern of the last meeting is would they literally, would the person literally need to read every line item in the warrant? And the short answer is no, that, you know, it would have to give summaries by general fund, revolving fund, and grant fund and payroll. Those would be the four areas that would need reporting out in terms of the finances for each. And the second question that I was asked to find out about is the subcommittee model. And I think I'll just read this from everybody in the public as well. So the subcommittee model is also permissible as a delegation of the full committee's authority, but it does require compliance with open meeting law, whereas the delegation to an individual does not. And because the action would be one of a governmental, government body, there would have to be a motion and vote to approve the warrants. Committee uses a subcommittee model. There's no need for the reporting described above. So that was the answer to those crewed questions. And again, the, the potential vote anyway, the language on there is essentially whether the committee wants to establish a process that the entire committee will vote and approve warrants at each meeting, or if the committee would like to designate one committee member to sign warrants and update the committee at each meeting. And that's the choice you have. But those are the two, that's sort of like the decision tree that's laid out in the Mass Municipal Act from a couple of years ago. And that's where we are. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify if I can for the, the committee, but the reason why my name is on there is because this question had actually originated with a different committee. And so this has been sort of spilled over into the region, but probably at least-
It was the Amherst one.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be tremendously confusing. Sorry. Mr. Menino?
Could you briefly update us as to why the current model has to be replaced?
So, yes, because at the current time, the committee does neither of the two acceptable practices. So one is that the committee would literally read and vote at each meeting on the warrants. That does, that has not been the practice of the district, nor is there one committee member identified or designated to perform that function. So with the Mass Municipal Act, we, you know, districts are actually committees of all types, not just school committees, need to update their method of signing, of approving warrants, and these are the two methods that are, were laid out in that law.
So the Municipal Modernization Act that became a law is the reason we have to do this?
I just had a clarification question. So the, the, the statement about the subcommittee model is also permissible. Is that a third option than what's described in the agenda? Because the agenda describes that the entire committee votes to approve warrants. So there, there's three options? Is that what, correct?
Right, so they would, I think it's, that's sort of a version of the first option you have, because there still is a public vote on warrants.
But technically, the answer is yes.
Yes.
There's a third option. I mean, there's a third option. It's, it's just that, and I think that my, I mean, forgive me for saying this. My guess is the reason why it's not listed into the vote is it wasn't anticipated that we'd go that way because if we really want to vote on this in open meeting, we can do that right here. We don't need the credit of the subcommittee to do it.
Yep.
Sorry, Ms. Donnis?
No, it's fine.
Ms. Spencer?
I just have a clarifying question about the option where we delegate to an individual. I'm just thinking about instances where that individual may not be available. So would we be able to, would, would we have like a chair and a-
That's a good question.
Because if, if I'm on vacation, I don't want to be worried that I'm holding up somebody getting paid if I'm that person.
Like you need an alternate, essentially.
Exactly. Just somebody who can step in in their absence.
So the way that the first paragraph, third line from the bottom, and it's not totally addressing your point, but I think this is a conversation starter, perhaps. If the individual is not able to attend the meeting, they can provide this statement in writing to be read by the chair or superintendent or any other committee member. And is your question if that person wasn't just literally down there?
It's also physically, you have to sign the warrants, right?
You have to review them and sign them. Yeah, so let's say it's a separate argument that the person goes on a week, a vacation for ten days with their family.
Yeah.
And there's a payroll period in there. Then what?
Right, so I think that'd be another question to go back to. My guiding assumption is that if it's not a subcommittee, there could be a backup. Yeah, yeah, that person would then be able to delegate someone to play that role.
But you probably want to have an identified alternate, right?
That would be-
That seems cleaner because if this committee is going to vote to identify someone, it's the designated, then you'd want to have an identified alternate voted by the committee as well. Okay. What is, yes, Ms. Donnis?
So this is just really in the weeds and pragmatic, but thinking about the individual that's signing, in theory, that person could be signing them at these committee meetings, much as we do today. Or would they, would it be required that they come into the business office and sign?
Mr. Mangano, you have an opinion?
My preference would be that they would come into the business office either weekly or every other weekly. A, because that's one of the advantages, they can be signed more often. If we waited for school committee meetings, it doesn't eliminate that. But also, that's where all the invoices are, too. So if they had, they wanted to pull the invoices, they're all right there, and they could easily do that. So there's some advantages to it being in the business office.
And this, this may sound funny, but the other reason is too is that if, if, if the person who's designated is going to have to fill in this information and read it, I am personally uncomfortable, is my opinion, with them doing it on the fly in these meetings and hope they get the number right. You know what I mean? That's not funny enough.
Yeah.
I'd love to have that, you know, the dot, the i's dotted and the t's crossed on whatever they're reporting out on. And I think they'd do that best if they were in the business office beforehand. Okay, anyone have an opinion, by the way? And I guess, I guess another question I have is, anyone have a burning interest in being designated to? Because by the way, the default answer is going to be, we're probably going to have to vote to do this in these sessions if nobody wants to volunteer to go to the business office and rummage through all the warrants and sign them. Yes, Ms. Stanser?
I'll do it.
Well, it's wonderful.
I'll volunteer.
Anyone want to be an alternate? We could live without an alternate for a while. We can live without an alternate for a while.
I, I would.
Ms. Spencer will be an alternate. Wonderful. So now what we need is we need a motion to do, we need, here's my question, actually, Dr. Morris, here's a question for you. So I think we need a motion, like move, to establish a warrant signing process designating Ms. Stanser to sign warrants and update the committee at each meeting with Ms. Spitzer serving as an alternate. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I realize that I made a motion. I'll just go with it. Is there any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify. It carries unanimously eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you both. Very much. And even better, we are now back ahead of schedule, which is just so cool.
Regional assessment.
Regional assessment.
And just to clarify real quickly, that previous vote, that's only for the region, right? So the Amherst still has to impel them, stays the same for now. Regional assessment update, regional assessment method update. So quick recap, the method we voted to use for FY twenty's assessment method was to phase in thirty percent of the statutory method. The plan that was put together, sort of the direction that was put together by the advisory board and shared with all the town officials, was to go to forty percent for next year and then fifty percent the year after. And at town meeting, that plan was, seemed like there was support for that plan. But we now have some rumblings that maybe at least one of the towns-
Which town meeting or are you just sort of choosing to-
Four-town meeting in December, January? No, February, February. But over the past, the spring and the summer, we've heard, at least from one town, that there's some people in that town that aren't supportive of that plan. I went to a meeting in Shootsberry a few weeks ago, and they basically discussed that plan versus going all the way to statutory. They heard from some constituents that are advocating for going all the way to the statutory method. And so I talked to their town administrator today. They're going to be having a series of meetings over the next month or so. And by the end of November, they hope to give some direction to the school committee and to Dr. Morris and I on sort of what, at least from a board perspective, what their, their views are on the assessment method. So there's really maybe four options to consider. I'll lay them out for you really quickly. There's to stick with the plan, which would be go to forty percent statutory method for FY twenty-one. There is to go to model what going all the way to the statutory method would look like. There's to do something in between. There's three options. There's this fourth one in there, but something in between. So those are really what we can consider, and we'll be looking at models of that over the next month or so. And really, this group and Dr. Morris and I are really trying to think about how we want to structure the four-town meeting to be as productive, productive as possible and keep things on a positive track.
Can we have that for December?
December seventh.
Seven?
Yeah.
I think the only, if I could add just very briefly, the, I'm very appreciative that the, some of our local representatives have reached out and are, will be attending that meeting because I think they're, what they've shared is that they're aware that there's some tension in some of the communities. They want to work with the towns to come up with mutually agreeable solutions because they're dedicated to our school staying as strong as they can. And they know that that relies on, kind of, the fiscal piece has a large impact on that. So I just want to say publicly, I'm appreciative that, that the outreach was what occurred and that our local representatives seem highly engaged in this question, and it cuts across two local, two state representatives, and both seem highly engaged in the work.
That's great. So is there a thought to go to the other three towns? Is there a thought to go to the other three towns and apprise them of what's going on and talk to them?
Yeah, so we have-
Take their temperature.
Right. We've informed them a little bit of sort of the, what's going on. We did talk about having an advisory group meeting sometime in November.
Is that, is that analogous to what we did last year?
What we did last year of having like one representative from each town to come meet with us, kind of share input and then report back. It's unclear whether all the towns still want to do that or not before the four-town meeting.
Well, I just meant if you, if we went to Shootsberry, I mean, maybe that was at their invitation?
Yeah, that was at their invitation to kind of hear the, mainly to provide data and sort of background context for the-
The reason I'm asking, apart, I'm not trying to just like have a conversation with you.
Yeah, yeah, but go right on.
But the reason I'm asking is because I, we can talk about this many ways, but there's, there, we all know that one of the possible outcomes, and depending on where the conversations flow, it's not an unlikely outcome. Could be that we can't get agreement this year between the towns.
Right.
And so for that reason, as early and as fulsome an engagement as we can have with towns, both collectively, but also even individuals, make sure they're as fully apprised as possible, is I think really advisable. And one reason is because I think it's entirely possible that we go all the way to town meeting in Amherst Council next year, we're not going to be able to an agreement. And so we're literally getting stuck in like DESI, Division of Local Services purgatory for a long time figuring out whether we could then build agreement. And I just want people to be prepared for it. Either prepared for that, but also prepared in that context for what these conversations need to be at each step. And I don't, I don't, I mean, my hope is that when we go into December seventh, we don't want it to be a day that'll live in infamy. We want to make sure that, you know, we don't have an asymmetry between the towns and what their knowledge base is so that they're able to come in really feeling informed and able to have a mutual conversation.
Yeah, no, we can certainly reach out to the towns, just to give them an update sort of on where things are at. The difficulty or just the uncertainty really right now is just sort of what guidance we're going to receive from finance committees and select boards in Shootsberry, because I think they're still literally having those conversations about both extremes, really, is what they're looking at. So, but we'll reach out and keep them up to date.
Are there any, any, Spencer?
So I'm, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing on this and the hard work you've been doing over the-
Could you speak up, please?
Yes, so I just want to thank Sean for the hard work he's been doing on, on this because it's, it's really important for, for our schools that we, we do come up with a plan. I'm also hesitant to bring this up, but I, I'm, I think everybody here is aware that you're leaving at the end of this year. So in terms of planning for what will probably be a very, not definitely, but potentially be a difficult negotiation period, do we have a plan on who will step in to take over Sean's place? Other than the, because I could see, obviously, I know we're hiring a new director of finance, but given his role in these negotiations and the importance of having somebody who's had the knowledge that he has now historically, like, and I'm not talking about years back, I'm just thinking like a few months of experience on it. So, yeah, I would love to know what our, what our plan is in that.
Sure. So I think my, my short answer is that whoever replaces Mr. Mangano, I really appreciate Mr. Mangano that he has shared with me that he's willing to provide, you know, that context and ongoing support to make sure that person's successful, even beyond, you know, not an official kind of-
I want to come back to the four-town meeting in February is really what I'm angry now.
That is, just to be really clear, because it's public, that is not going to happen. Mangano will find other things on a Saturday to do, skiing, I don't know, playing, sledding, whatever it is. But, you know, we've talked and I just want to publicly thank Sean for being willing to provide ongoing technical support, you know, in, in limited capacity, but just to make sure that, that institutional knowledge and memory does not go away on January first. So, thank you.
Is there anything else from the committee?
So I was just wondering, I mean, if, if, if we've had one town that has requested already, I'm wondering if there's anything that this committee can do to urge our respective towns, the remaining respective three towns, to invite Mr. Mangano, the superintendent, whomever, to, you know, maybe have a sit-down or even make a presentation of sorts, you know, to the individual town.
Is that how this happens? I mean, I'm not trying to sound funny, but, you know, I love having these conversations on camera. Like, do you have to be asked to the dance or are you willing to call someone up?
It goes both ways, I guess. Typically, I'm asked to the dance, but I usually offer an invitation.
I forgive you for going down, I just went to high school. Forgive me for going down this, this analogy. I just, I just meant, do you, can you, can you initiate a phone call to set up these meetings or do we really want to have our towns ask for?
No, I, we can initiate. We'll reach out. I mean, we've got good contacts at all the towns, between town administrators and finance committees. Again, most of the towns, if not all of them, are apprised of sort of what, really what we know to this point, which is there's uncertainty around it. And that there's been a push. They all know how the vote turned out last year, and that it was a vote at a time that was closer than we'd be comfortable with. But we'll reach out and offer, and it's not so much a data presentation because a lot of them have people who have been involved in this process. They know what the numbers are, they know the situation, but it's really just a check-in to kind of see how things are going, if they have any questions before, before we go to four-town meeting.
I just want to know, I mean, technically, like if, you know, there's anything that we need to do to get a ball rolling, you know, I, I can volunteer myself for, you know, for the Amherst town. But it just seems like it's a good idea to try to get as many different- for, you know, for the Amherst, uh, town, um, but it just seems like it's a good idea to try to get as many different people who will be present at that meeting on December seventh or whenever, um, at the table to, and, and understanding what we're talking about before that actual meeting happens. Because oftentimes I find that, uh, folks show up and the element of, of surprise, if you will, from seeing the numbers on the screen, tends to skew conversations in, you know, unwarranted or, you know, undesirable ways. So if, if we can do that, that would be great.
We've also had a lot of debate around whether or not, um, the towns could be forced onto the statutory method, and what happens if you don't pass one. And you've gotten a lot of clarity around how that would actually work. And so I think, I don't, to be honest with you, I'm completely uninterested in talking about that as like a factual item, like, how does it work? You know, at the four town meeting, we may have to anyways, but I mean, to the, to the extent that we can actually socialize the information you've gotten as feedback to the four towns, so that everyone's aware about what you've heard, well before they get to that meeting would be really desirable. Uh, Mr. Fanch, then.
Yeah, I think Leverett has a pretty good idea of what, what it faces. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the board and the finance committee, and using data that is current, assuming that there's no increase in the potential regional budget. And if we go up, you, you have to understand, we're also gonna be hitting that two and a half max. And so they're trying to be very careful how much they increase as they go towards that figure, okay? And just some figures that were played around with, and we have to also remember, and this is probably a good argument for regionalization, Union Twenty-Eight for, for Leverett's gonna go up about eleven grand. So after you take this, this, the regional budget and Union Twenty-Eight, if we go up one percent, it leaves about thirty thousand for the rest of the town. That's school, fire, police, library.
When you say Union Twenty-Eight, you mean just the central office for Union Twenty-Eight?
Correct. So that's a pretty big increase. So that's sort of the playing field for us, and I think they're willing to go with what was done last year. Can't afford to go to the statutory method, um, otherwise there's nothing left for the town. May even have to increase what it pays for this regional budget. So, you know, some, some compromise has to be worked out. Um, why suddenly last year's formula is no longer valid is something that I think, uh, needs to be answered.
And just really quickly, and again, a dilemma, if, if we do go with the full statutory method, you're not gonna have those numbers till the end of January, early February, to even really start letting towns know what their assessments are gonna look like, cause it's gonna be based on the governor's budget and the minimum contribution, so it's gonna push everything way back.
I think just, in, in addition, the additional complication, excuse me, of that there's a huge educational reform bill that's gonna potentially be hammered out in conference committee or committee conference and then voted. Uh, the timing of that, plus the governor's budget is gonna, um, I think there'll be, potentially, even if there's good outcomes, the uncertainty of when that occurs and how quickly that can be fed into, um, the governor's budget with accurate numbers, I think it's, it's an open question, uh, cause it's, it is a new, it may, will be a new ballgame if, if all these other things change. And again, I'm not, that's not a critique, it's just, this year is not like every other year, uh, in terms of the governor's budget, if this bill actually passes. Or if there's uncertainty whether the bill will pass, which is possible.
Okay, um, anyone else?
I'll just add that, um, Shootsberry has been talking and discussing and wrestling with the direction it's going since probably mid-July. And we're meeting on the twenty-sixth of November, you know, to hopefully hammer out some kind of resolution between the boards and a select group of town members. I'm just hoping that it works out for the best.
We wish you well. I think we all wish you well.
I invited myself to that meeting, by the way, um, but I don't know if I got accepted.
We can Snapchat or text or something.
Uh, anything else?
Some, it's getting there.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Regano. Agenda planning calendar. It's an awkwardly phrased item.
Cut this copy and paste it from last couple, so I'm open to any other.
It's also referring to a different committee.
Oh my gosh. Yeah, in fact, actually. Talk about copying, talk about copying and pasting. Uh, yeah, we're not doing that. We're gonna talk about the regional schools. I'm hoping the calendar in the back looks like the correct one.
It does.
Yay. Uh, okay.
Maybe offer just a little bit on the next meeting?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so, uh, as we've done in the past, so, so I'm a little concerned about how packed this meeting is, so I'll say that at the beginning. But we have, uh, it, the plan is for it to be a joint meeting, because there are the first two topics, which would be joint topics. One is a six through twelve math update, and, uh, about sixth grades in, in two elementary schools in the districts that I serve. The math folks felt like you can't separate out sixth grade, cause you lose the full context of the curriculum change that occurred in math gr, math grade six through twelve. Uh, so we asked to have that be done jointly, and the second item is the collaborative from Educational Services. We'll do a brief update on their programming, um, but there are two districts that have asked to join the collaborative. And to, for districts to join the collaborative, it's actually a very long, complicated, uh, as members of the, 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 um, the subcommittee members or the reps of the CES know, a long, complicated process has to be approved by multiple levels at this, um, in the state, and it requires a certain quorum of votes of member committees. And so Mr. Deal and Dr. Deal and I talked, and we thought, uh, instead of making go to three meetings, and for some of you, everyone here actually hearing him twice, if we could do it all in one full swoop, that it would work well. We also at least have slated right now, um, the HR and diversity PD update, uh, which we've done each year the last few years. Uh, school calendar review, which, uh, we has drafts that have gone out to the, through the teachers association. Thank you to Mick O'Connor, who's the president of APEA, in working with me and Ms. Westmoreland on that. It's a little bit of an odd year, cause of very late Labor Day, so the models look slightly different than the past couple of years, so it might require a little more dialogue than the average year. We have, um, some revolving fund, uh, pieces to close. Uh, we have some debt, actually, Mr. Mangano, who just left, asked that we may have to make not just rescind the authorized debt, but also to look at, um, ongoing debt, and he wants to do more of a full update before he leaves, and that would be two meetings, both the November and the December meeting. Capital plan review, so Mr. Roy Clark's working on that, um, fee review, and then wellness approach and update. So just even saying them, it probably is too many topics for one meeting. And, uh, I could definitely suggest some to move to December, but that's at least what's slated, and I haven't even talked about the gradespan advisory, um, as well.
Where do you want gradespan advisory?
December, cause the meeting's after the twelfth, right?
It is. Yeah.
So we have to put that in there.
Yep, I will add that right in my notes. I, my sense is the fee review could be pushed. Um, it's not that urgent, and our budget process will play out over time. And the wellness actually might be better served to do in December, because we're doing some work this Thursday, but we're also doing significant work, um, on November fourteenth. Uh, and so I'd like to actually have that work have occurred before I report back to the committee. So perhaps if we move the, both those two items down, that picks the November meeting.
So then we'd be looking for a fee vote on January fourteenth?
Yeah.
Is there?
Acceptable to the committee.
Is there, um, is there any continuity issue you have around having some different committee members potentially?
Actually, a, a different thing we could do is just do it in January, the two meetings in January.
Why don't we do that? Since, since, since December tenth is already packed.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do that?
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
I just, I feel, I mean, not that, not that on some level, at a meta level, this is always gonna happen, but when we literally have two consecutive meetings, saying discussion, vote, and then we know there'll be some different members, that just feels weird. Uh, unlike the budget, where we kinda can't help it.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. I think that's a good suggestion.
I think earlier on this year, we also talked about having a meeting once, uh, if there are new members on the committee in December, um, having the budget informational session about how all of that stuff works sometime in December.
Right.
Also.
Right.
As an additional meeting?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna mention the same thing. I mean, I think we've been talking about this for a while.
Yeah.
It feels like really important to try to get this in here.
Why haven't we gotten that scheduled, anyway?
We will.
We agreed that we would schedule it later, and it's getting later now.
Yeah, no, 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 no. This is like a pending item that's hanging there for no good reason, as far as I can tell.
I can, Paul, I was gonna say one other thing on this particular topic. Is that okay? So, uh, not to be awkward, but in a week we'll know who new members will be, not seated till January, so it may make sense to, I don't know how the committee would feel, wait till at least give them the option. They won't be members in December, but if, if the goal is to have some orientation that's inclusive of members who are new to the committee, we might wanna wait to find out who that is, and that was the original thinking, and then schedule the meeting to make sure that both current committee members, but also people who will be new.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind finding a couple of dates, though, that we could.
Okay, very good.
I just, cause I just, I, I think it's a mistake to suddenly like wake up on November sixth and say, let's schedule for three weeks from now, actually, three or four weeks from now.
Yeah.
You know, we all know that, like, once you get past Veterans Day, basically, the rest of the year is a black hole that like sucks everyone's attention and time, and then all of a sudden, it's like January third or second, right? And it could be a wonderful time, people would be very happy. I mean, it could actually, people are too happy doing things that are non-school committee related. But the point is, we know that that's, the time is gonna get away from us.
Yeah.
If we're not careful.
I think that, that.
I like that save at the end, that was. I just wanted to clarify, the meeting on December tenth for the SETF, I believe, uh, it's not an update, it's rather a discussion of goals. So SETF goals, which we've discussed for the previous two years already, have, have been done really well, um, thanks to the subcommittee's work and budget guidance. So I just wanna clarify that, cause once it goes on the agenda, you know, that'll be important to, to have that distinction.
Sure.
Got it.
Spencer?
What is SETF?
So that is the School Equity Task Force.
Thank you.
You got it?
Look, we had the first read of several policies at our last meeting, um, two of those probably will move to a different committee, rather than coming back to this committee, but two of them, the anti-bullying, which I don't believe there was, um, much comment or reason on the policy subcommittee, we'll take another look at that on the eleventh. Um, and then there's also the anti-harassment party, so I don't know if we want, I know November and December are pretty packed, but I don't know if we want to.
We absolutely, we, we have to have it, no, we have to have, gotta have them back in November and December, we gotta be voting. If we're gonna, I mean, the committee's gotta either vote it up or vote it down by December tenth. Period.
So we'll be meeting on the eleventh to look at both of tho, both of those particular policies, um, so.
Just give it, give us feedback, and we'll, we'll, we'll fit them in. We're just gonna, we have to fit them in.
Yeah, I'll put a placeholder in there for the, on the twelfth, at least for one of them. It seems like one is certainly ready to.
Right.
Be ready to be considered.
No, that's good, that's good. And anything else? Yes?
A review of sabbatical application approval process and the budget cost for the last five years, for various reasons. That's, I'm wondering what it costs, how it's done.
I heard the first part, I missed the second.
A review of the sabbatical application approval process and the experience over the last five years.
Sure. I'm just thinking of when to place that. My place is in January, which is when sabbatical requests are typically considered.
Anytime before the end of the year.
Sure.
Got that captured?
Yeah. Sorry, I missed the second part.
No, it's okay. Uh, anything else? I mean, at some point later on, we're gonna, oh, you have athletic fields on air for December tenth, cause I knew we're gonna come back to this time. I don't hear anything else. Yes?
Superintendent evaluation. I believe that was something that was also commented on last time, but just trying to plug some of those things in in advance. So that's in June, early June?
Oh, those things are sort of absent, yeah.
Yeah, so I thought, and maybe I missed it, that I was, uh, gonna wait for guidance from the evaluation subcommittee on the timing they wanted to have, cause I think what I heard was different opinions based on the different town elections of how we wanted to do it. So, um, I'm happy to plug it in, but my understanding was I was waiting to hear guidance from that subcommittee on.
Oh, I think that committee is sleeping.
I think I am the chair of this committee.
You are the, you are the chair, definitely.
And so I will.
Oh, and Kip doesn't.
Do you have enough fellow members? That's what I was wondering, that. Who else?
So Kip has no idea that he's even a member of that committee.
Of what committee?
The superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
I know that.
Oh, you do?
But we'll, we'll.
Well, then isn't that awesome?
We'll, we'll talk and.
What a happy thing. All right, so then we'll look for feedback, and then we'll plug it in. Uh, and I guess if there's any way that could play plugged in before December tenth, that'd be ideal. Including, what about a mid-year review? I'll have that in there. Cool. Anything else? Do we have any gifts?
We do not.
Yes, there's, I saw it in the regional folder.
You do?
Yep. That's why we need one person to sign this.
Is there really something in there?
There is.
Ms. Spencer?
I moved to accept the following gifts, um, from the Amherst Hurricanes Athletic Boosters, Inc., number four eighty-five, a donation for H U Delhi, H U D L software, in the amount of one thousand ninety, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And from Mary Lou Conca, number two five nine seven, region student lunch forgiveness, in the amount of sixty-three dollars, for a total of two thousand sixty-two dollars.
And moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Spencer, seconded by Fanch. Yes.
I just have a question. I've noticed that there has been, um, a regular donation from one individual for the lunch forgiveness, and I'm just wondering if the superintendent can shed a little bit more light on where that money is going and how it's being handled?
I can certainly get back to you next meeting. Um, I was told at four forty-five, there's no gifts. Mr. Mangano snuck it in on me. So, um, I will, but I've noticed the same thing that you've noticed. But I can definitely follow up with the committee.
And I'll just mention that I may, I'm gonna have to make another phone call, but I personally called the, the person that's made those donations, because now it's a hundred and ninety-three dollars that she has donated to the lunch program.
Yeah.
And I will call her again and thank her for this third one. This is the third.
Yes, it's been a few.
She has done that.
If that's, if that's exhausted the comment, um, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor accepting the gifts as enumerated, please signify by raising your hand. It carries eight to nothing, uh, and passes. Thank you very much. Is there a further motion? McCallum?
Move to adjourn.
Is it a second?
Second.
Seconded by your donors. Uh, it is not debatable. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It carries eight to nothing, we are adjourned.